Okay, it's five o'clock, so we call this meeting of Tittitess County Public Hospital District Number One. The Board of Commission Regular Meeting to Order. This is June twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty four. Bob, can you hear us all right? You bet. All right. So we have the agenda here. Any additional changes to the agenda? If not, do I have a motion to approve the agenda? Okay, move from Erica, second from John. All those in favor of approving the agenda, as submitted, please say aye.
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 All right. And the consent agenda with the minutes from, uh, from May twenty third and twenty eighth, uh, board meetings, twenty eighth, being the, um, special board meeting that we had, uh, with the, uh, tour of the expansion project. Then we have the approval checks, the foundation reports, the minutes from the finance committee. Any, uh, problem, anything that anyone wants pulled from the consent agenda? If not, motion to approve the consent agenda. Okay, motion from America. Second, second from Terry. Any, uh, further discussion? All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye.
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 All right. And so you done this? Thank you. Right now, uh, it's time for public comments and announcements. Um, if you are, like to make a public comment or announcement, please begin by stating your name and, uh, where you're from. Uh, please keep your comments to three minutes and please remember that, uh, we don't, uh, respond to, uh, public comments at the meeting, but if we have your contact information, we'll be happy to do that following the meeting. Um, is there anyone here who would like to make a public comment or announce?
Oh, hi.
Go ahead.
I'm Joyce Ackerman, and I just lost my notes, so I hope I could remember. Uh, I won't be able to remember the dates, but my husband has, uh, pneumonia, well, had pneumonia, and he also is a diabetic. Uh, I think it was like May twenty eighth, he went to the emergency room, not knowing he had pneumonia, but he had passed out and we called the ER. And they, he was admitted to the hospital for, I believe, six or seven or days. And during that time, I'm knowing that he had pneumonia. His, he, his gown was never changed. He was never given a washcloth or someone that would come and wash his leg. He asked for a recliner because by this time his leg is swollen up pretty good. They're mainly focusing on his pneumonia and forgetting about his diabetes. Uh, even though he was getting his insulin three times a day, so they definitely knew he had diabetes. He asked for recliner, declined. Uh, he asked for something to raise his leg because it was quite swollen and they said no, they couldn't, they would look around. And then the chairman of the ward or whatever the, uh, um, RN or what of the ward came in because Jim had asked for a larger bed and a recliner and he said that, oh, the only large bed they had, uh, got ripped in the elevator, so there was nothing they could do about it. And, uh, then let's see what happened next. Uh, uh, after asking for a compression sock, which they said they do not have, I brought one from home and put it on. And then he was discharged on that Saturday. Cause this happened on Monday, so he was discharged on Saturday. I actually, I think it was Sunday morning, Saturday. Anyway, it was a week in there. And, uh, with the follow-up with comprehensive medical, or I mean, comprehensive healthcare over here. Anyway, with his doctor, Dr. Bowen. And he went to three days in a row to see Dr. Bowen because Dr. Bowen was out one day, so he saw PA. And then, um, he was really bad, so I took him back in. His, I mean, his leg was weeping and it was like this size and, um, he received three IVs in the emergency room and sent home with two, um, antibiotics. And they said they were very powerful antibiotics and, uh, asked, um, oh, uh, the doctor did recommend that he should go back in the hospital and said, no, Jim, Jim said, no, he said, I've had such a horrible time. The last time, and I'm not going to go back in and come out with my other leg with cellulitis. So he followed up with his doctor every day, three times the first week and then three times the second week. And now he's on wound care. Um, he's went to wound care three times this week, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. Then he went again today, so. And he's scheduled for wound care, um, every Wednesday until they see some results. So that's my complaint.
Thank you very much, Joyce. Be sure to get your contact information to Mandy Ween over here, Mandy Olson.
Either one of us.
And are there other, uh, comments? Yes.
Well, I have my event. My name is Jeannie Lancaster and I've lived in this county most of my life. And I had a concern about a billing issue that occurred. Um, let me just give you some background. I have seen a natural path because, as you know, sometimes it's difficult to get us through primary care providers. And so their recommendation has been, if you can see someone else or go to urgent care or rapid response, do that because we won't be able to see the performance. So I had some lab work done in two thousand and twenty-two and it was submitted through Medicare and Primera Blue Cross, which I'm still on. And it was paid in full. So that's two thousand and twenty-two. I went back a year later, two thousand and twenty-three, and had some repeat lab work. And I, I didn't hear anything else. I received a bill from Tittitess Valley Hospital for that two thousand and twenty-three, uh, lab work on May fifth of two thousand and twenty-four. And this was done in June sixteenth of two thousand and twenty-three. So that's when I received it. So it was a bill for eight hundred and twenty-nine dollars per lab. That's it. It didn't have anything itemized, nothing. So I called and talked to Marissa in the billing office and she really couldn't help me. So she said, um, she wanted me to talk to Lisa Gott. And so she put me through to her voicemail. And so I left her a message expressing what my concerns were and why I was receiving a bill for this almost a year to the date later. And just questioning why it hadn't been paid by Medicare and Primera when it had previously. And she never returned my call. I left a voicemail. And then I called back and I talked to someone named Cheryl. It was very helpful. And in the meantime, I'm contacting Medicare, trying to figure things out. And they said, it has to be submitted by the hospital or the, where the lab is performed. If it's performed by a qualified medical practitioner, then it should be paid, but it has to be submitted and then denied by Medicare in order for my supplemental to pay for it. So I said, I would really like to have an itemized statement of all the lab work that was done because that's a huge bill. So, and, and I happen to mention to her, in the meantime, I had, had some cardiology work done. And I had gone to Virginia Mason and I had some lab work ordered from Seattle that was, that was conducted here. And so when Cheryl went through, she found that almost half of it was, I don't know if the right term is miscoded, but it should have been coded under the doctor at Virginia Mason Hospital who ordered it. And it was not, it was all put under my natural path. And I was told that there, they have a system now that if you go to a natural path and lab is ordered, that it won't even allow them to process it, whichever, this billing system. So I did meet with Scott Olander and he said that with this new system, that is correct. Medicare wants, um, electronic claims sent. They don't want paper claims sent. So I had a bill of remaining of four hundred and ninety-eight dollars that I paid. And I'm just concerned because I don't think, I mean, I don't know what happens that a bill doesn't get sent out for almost a year. And then for a lot of people who will receive a bill and maybe think, oh, my gosh, that's a huge amount, but I'm just going to pay it or make payments and never look into it to find out, to discover that it's actually from two doctors. So, and I'm confused. The hospital billed and looks like it is the system that is currently being used. Um, the, they submitted to Medicare and it was paid by my supplemental, but there was no recourse for me because that first step has been eliminated, if that makes sense. So I'm just here to express a frustration in this, in my particular situation.
All right. Thank you, um, for that, Jeannie. Um, and, uh, also, if you wouldn't mind, just, I mean, have your contact information. Uh, other public comments? Yes.
My name is Ann Devney and you've seen me here before. Um, I'm here to discuss the emergency room and the fact that the ultrasound machine is not staffed on the weekends. And that apparently is the only thing that kept me here for seven hours until I was discharged to drive clear over to Issaquah to have an ultrasound of my legs to rule out that I was not having a pulmonary embolism. But in the meantime, y'all ran an MRI of my spine, an MRI with contrast of my spine. And I'm thinking, boy, that's a lot of money to be, to be racking up expenses. So why do we have top line equipment in our ER but no staff to run it? And, you know, why are we celebrating this brand new equipment and the newly remodeled imaging rooms when there's nobody to run it? I'm amazed at and how we could do that. I know that staffing is an issue and getting people to work because they just don't want to work weekends. They don't want to take call weekends. But somehow, people are getting around that by putting people on calls. You know, it's paying more money, whatever. Um, I mean, it's ridiculous to have, what, what would have happened if I'd have been pregnant? Oh, I'm in sixty-nine and I'm pregnant. But what would have happened if I would have come in and been pregnant? And having a diff, I, I know that you've got a big sign in there that's the law, that all you have to do is tell lies me and discharge me to another place. But an ultras, you really do, I mean, an ultrasound is kind of a, to me, is a simple machine. It's not that difficult. And that's my comment. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ann.
Yeah, I did hear her comment.
Yes.
The same thing happened to Jim, who was in there on a Friday and they said he would have to stay, or Saturday or Friday night, I don't know. But there was nobody in ultrasound, so they said he would have to stay till Monday. We went home.
Okay.
Yeah, they went in Monday and see if I had the ultrasound.
Yeah, I make a comment too in that regard.
Sure.
I know, um, I want to support the hospital. And, you know, I voted in favor of increasing taxes so that we can have new radiology equipment or new equipment that we better service. But when we have no people available to operate the equipment and they're sending people to Issaquah or Yakima or Prosser or somewhere in the tri-cities, I think that's a shame.
Thank you.
Oh, one more thing. Is it possible to get stats of how many people are, um, are referred to another ER because you don't have people to run machines? I think that that would be a really interesting statistic.
All right, well, uh, in our reply to you, we'll, uh, we'll address it.
Thank you.
I think it's important to make clear there was no taxes used for any of this equipment.
Okay.
Our, our taxes per year for the entire county is only a little over ten thousand dollars that would come in. It's, it's like ten dollars a person or something. But I
Thank you for
your frustration nonetheless, but I just want to make that clear.
Thank you.
Other comments? Are there any other, uh, public comments that anyone would like to make at this, at this time?
And again, I just want to say, although we're not going to respond now, know that you are heard. We will be discussing it. And through Mandy and whatnot, we will try to reply in useful ways to these, this feedback, because I know it's important that you feel heard. So thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, that's why we're getting your, uh, your contact. Any other public comments? All right. Uh, thank you guys for, uh, coming in.
Thank you.
We'll move on then to our uh, to a presentation from Dr. Bowen, who's gonna, from, um, Community Health of Central Washington. Uh, Dr. Bowen? Here.
She has not arrived yet.
We saw her in Yakima forty-five minutes ago.
Are, are you the, uh, new residents?
Yeah.
Would you like to introduce yourself?
Sure.
Okay.
Um, hi, I'm Amelia Graves. I'm one of the new family medicine residents with Community Health of Central Washington here in Ellensburg. Um, I am originally from Flora. I've been here two weeks now, adjusting to no humidity and high winds. Um, I'm really, really excited to be in Ellensburg. I'm really, really excited to practice in a rural healthcare setting and to join, uh, your hospital here. So thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming.
Thanks.
Hi, I'm, uh, Marissa Crager. I know many of you. Um, I've worked at KVH as an RN since two thousand and eighteen um, and just graduated medical school and am so, so honored and excited to be serving this community as a physician. I'm also at Community Health of Central Washington. Um, we're family medicine residents, so we do everything. But I am, am, am in particular a DO, um, so any of your patients that need osteopathic manipulative therapy, please send them my way. Um, it's a, a passion of mine. Thank you.
Really excited, uh, to have you here. Thank you for coming and, and saying hi. And, uh, we're glad to have you, have you both, uh, practicing in the community.
Thank you. We're, we're Marissa's been here and she's been showing me the ropes, which I really appreciate. But, um, I'm very excited. It's a beautiful, beautiful community and I can't wait to really be here. Fortunately, we're stuck in Yakima a lot of this year, but then next year we get to be here a lot more.
All right.
There couldn't be a better community to serve. We really, I, I love you all.
It's good. Yeah, welcome. We're doing, we're glad to hear that.
Thank you so much. We're gonna, we're gonna take off.
Yeah, thanks. No, that's good. We appreciate it. Thanks for stopping. Taking the time to, to say hi to us. Thank you. All right. If there's nothing else, uh, uh, about the, with the top, the agenda, we'll move on to reports and dashboards. Uh, we'll start then with, um, Mandy Olson, our Chief Quality Officer. Mandy?
Hi. So, um, my report starts on page twelve and I think I'll, I'll probably start there. Um, just reminding you that, um, we don't have the minutes in the board pack yet. So there is a summary of what we talked about at QI Council there. Um, and I would like to just, uh, go over especially the, um, survey and investigations that we've had recently and just kind of get you kind of an update since, uh, the last board meeting. So, um, what we've had going on is there is the Department of Health investigation about care from August of two thousand and twenty-two. And, um, we had to submit a plan of correction by June fifteenth, which we did. Uh, there were some clarifications and revisions that were requested and, um, we did get that plan of correction accepted Tuesday, Monday?
It's a blur.
I can't. It's been a lot. Um, I think it was late evening, Monday. Um, um, so all of those corrections need to be complete by July twentieth. I don't know if she'll be coming back to do another survey to, to check on our findings. It did say that they had, um, closed it and accepted our attestation of what we planned to do. So it, there is a possibility that they will not come back in person, but, um, that's where we're at with that. And, and I think we're, um, on track for all of the education and policy changes that, uh, will come from that and some changes to care plans, um, and tasks that are in, uh, Oracle, um, for nursing and nursing staff, uh, just about care, initiating, uh, care assessments. And then, um, for our DNV survey, um, that corrective action plan was also due on fifteenth, um, and was submitted. They, they have a review process that can take quite a bit longer, um, uh, before they tell us whether or not it's accepted. They, it is in the review process. They said it could be up to, I think, six to eight weeks before they get back to us. I haven't seen it take that long before, but, um, we do have a couple holidays right around this time, so, um, we'll see. Regardless, we have to have our corrective actions completed for that on July twenty-first. Um, a lot of great work's happening there. Some of the things are, are already done. Uh, um, but we're kind of, DeeDee's pulled together a whole big team, um, because a lot of these have to do with education. And so we're doing kind of a virtual, um, what do we call it? Summer schools? Yeah, virtual summer school, um, for some of these topics, um, which are things like, um, the medication drips, making sure that order is specific about the goals of that drip. Um, and, uh, there's just different specifications. So that's one example of the education we're nursing on that. Um, I'm trying to think anything else about DNV in particular that we should talk about. I don't think at the board, last board meeting, we had received, um, their report, which included a report of how we are doing towards ISO nine thousand and one compliance. Uh, it was a really lovely report, gave some really great feedback about, um, especially the places they saw noteworthy efforts or where we're doing really well. And so that was really nice to see, um, not just them telling us, but in writing, the things that they were really impressed by and some other things we might look at focusing on next year. Um, and then, um, the joint commission lab survey, um, we did receive the report. There's no written plan of correction that is required at this point, but they do have to have their corrective action, um, done by, I think I had this wrong here. Um, it's July thirtieth, I believe. Is that right, Rhonda?
Yes, July thirtieth, we have to submit evidence of correction.
Yeah. Um, with DNV two, we also have to submit evidence of correction on certain items on four of the eight findings. But, um, that is not due until sixty days after they have accepted the corrective action plan. So we don't know when that due date is for submitting, um, our evidence on the DNV findings yet. Um, and I think also, uh, Katie and folks with the lab, um, we're including them in this, um, education, the virtual summer school as well. Um, so one of the things that I love about kind of doing that all together is we're getting all the content together and then we can, if there are individuals that it doesn't apply to, like, only certain things need to be given to providers, then we can pull those sections out and they'll go out to providers through, um, Shannon. Uh, so anyway, um, I'm trying to think of what else might be, who do you know? Or do you have any questions about the surveys or inspections?
We went through all this in more detail at the QI Council meeting. So Terry and I were, uh, representing the board there, but of course, Mandy will be happy to answer the specific questions if people have.
I guess it's worth telling you too, um, part of our, uh, oversight of this is to go through the plan of correction for each of those at the next, um, QI Council and make sure that we have oversight at QI Council for the follow-up there. So that's where that will happen.
All of the corrections seems achievable and like there's a, I think so, path, an obvious path.
Yeah, I mean, sometimes, uh, you know, you're trying to do this plan of correction quickly because you only have, um, ten calendar days to get it done and they, so it doesn't matter if there's a holiday or weekends or, or what. Um, so you're doing your best to anticipate what you're going to find in some cases. Um, and so it is okay for us to adjust our plan if there's things we find that, you know, oh, we thought this would work and that's not going to be the best case. But I think, I think they're fairly reasonable. We're getting through it. I, I think we'll meet the deadline.
The council also, um, authorized us to initiate a new fee around competencies and how we document and manage, uh, competencies, which is a theme across the surveys.
Yeah, so that's right. So the idea is, uh, focus efforts for the, for the
And I think, um, some of it is, another theme is we're doing things, but, um, the documentation isn't always right there, whether that's patient care documentation, it's not as, um, complete as it could be. Or, uh, our policy or our procedure about how we do something or the education that we provide. We're doing it in a lot of cases. It's just not obvious in, um, on our documentation. So, um, that's what we're hoping to work on specifically, creating competency and education copy is being able to easily assess those records of the drills and the education and the, um, skills that we're, uh, training, we're doing with staff.
Any, uh, questions, uh, before we get to the dashboard? Anything you want to call our attention to on the dashboard?
Well, this is going to be the first month you're going to highlight a measure. And so, um, Matt had asked to talk about restraints tonight. Um, so on our dashboard, that's on the, uh, second page, so page fifteen of your packet on the top right corner. Um, and I, I just want to talk in general about respect. Some of what Matt was asking about was, you know, what's included in the measure? How often are restraints used? Do you really have instances where people aren't documenting for like fourteen hours or, you know, what does this look like? So, um, just an overview kind of of restraints and DeeDee, please jump in if I'm not, if I'm, if I say something wrong here. But, um, one, uh, we have to address restraints and have a plan for them. It's part of CMS conditions of participation related to patient rights that we ensure that our patients are free from, uh, what do they call it? Abuse and corporal punishment. And, um, so our goal, and, and this is what's in our policy, is always to protect the rights and the safety, the dignity of our patients. And so restraints should only be used when a less restrictive intervention has been determined to be ineffective. So an example might be, maybe you have a patient with, um, dementia and they keep pulling out their, at their IV site, right? And they're pulling their IV out. We would prefer not to put them in restraints, right? That should be the last resort. We can see, can we hide the IV? So it doesn't bother them? Is there a way we can attach it to the patient that maybe it's not tugging on their skin? Whatever we can do to not use restraints. And that really is the goal nationwide is to use restraints as little as possible. Um, but there are times when it's really unavoidable to keep the patient and staff safe. So if we use restraints, there are, there are a lot of rules about what we have to do. So you have to have an order from a provider. Um, and there's two different kind of types of restraints. It's not really
Fast to it quickly. So what, uh, what level of provider who has to, who can?
An APC can order them, right? Yes.
So who can order restraints?
A physician, a AP, uh, so a nurse practitioner or a physician's assistant.
Okay.
Or doctor.
All right.
Uh, probably in an S, that's good too. Um, and I, but I don't
Oh, so you just state a provider?
Yeah.
Um, trained provider.
Yeah, so they have to, there are, there are kind of two situations in which restraints are used. So nonviolent medically indicated patients. Um, another, an example of that, besides maybe someone who doesn't have the ability to, to, to follow directions to stop maybe pulling at a tube is, um, like our patients who are intubated. And maybe awake enough to pull at the tube. We shouldn't be using restraints just because they're intubated, right? But we, if they are intubated and we're worried they're going to pull that tube out, um, because they're, maybe they're still having some movement, whatever. That's a, a time when restraints would be used for nonviolent medically indicated. And there's violent or stealth destructive behavior in patients. Um, and that's what it sounds like, right? Patients that are hitting, kicking, spitting on staff, um, intentionally or willfully causing harm to themselves or others. Um, and, uh, so they, they have different requirements for what you have to do depending on whether they're the, the nonviolent or the the nonviolent or the violent, um, restraints. If they're, either case has to have an order, a physician order, provider order, to initiate them, but it has to have the type of restraint, when they were placed on the patient, um, it has to be date and timestamped. Uh, nonviolent restraints can be, the order is good for up to twenty-four hours and then it has to be reordered.
So, um, could, you don't have to go into too much detail here, but what kinds of restraints are there?
There's a lot. If you, actually, if you put up all four rails of the bed, that is considered a restraint. But there are wrist restraints, there's mitts they put on people sometimes, it's just that they can't, they don't have the dexterity to pull things out. Um, there's the waist restraint. Some places still use chest restraints, but I don't think we've used those in a long time. Those are not usually recommended. In part because patients can injure themselves, right, when they're, um, strapped down or it compress on their chest too tightly. The net bed, there's, um, so a bed that, it's like a giant crib is how I would describe it. Uh, and so patients can't get out of bed and fall. Um, that's a considered restraint.
Are bed alarms considered restraint? I know there was discussion about that.
No, because they don't actually prevent them from getting out of bed at all.
It depends on the setting. Skill nursing, they are considered restraints.
A bed alarm?
Yes.
Really? Not, not in a hospital?
Okay.
Yeah. Um, if, if you are, you have violent restraints, then the order, it depends on the age of the patient. So the order is only good for one hour if you're, uh, less than nine years old. For two hours if you're, uh, nine to seventeen, and for four hours if you're eighteen or older. So, and in the case of violent strengths for violent patients, um, there has to be a physician face-to-face evaluation or provider face-to-face evaluation within an hour of that order, uh, either before or after. Um, and then those, so each time it's renewed, I think you have to have that face-to-face evaluation. And that was one of the findings on the, um, D N V, uh, survey, was about that face-to-face evaluation.
Um, I think a big part of the D N V survey was the documentation of it. Because the majority of these, um, restraints are happening in the emergency department. And as you know, we do have a provider there twenty-four seven, but it's actually going in, doing that full reassessment and documenting.
And having it timed, and the timestamp. So they're in and out of the room, but, is it clear that they were there within an hour of that restraint order being placed? So we're doing it, yeah, it's just, is it showing up in the, in the documentation?
So that's, yeah, that's one thing that's, uh, that's sort of a recurring theme. We talked about restraints is what constitutes a failure.
Yes.
So it has to be documented, uh, frequently, it has to be timestamped.
This is just some of it.
Right.
That's not all of it. The face-to-face evaluation is not in this current measurement, but it will be going forward. Um, that was not something we were including in that, but the orders, yes, so. Bonnie Gibson in my office, the quality improvement R N, has started doing these, um, reviews instead of Cody or Jeff doing them. Um, so she can give each of the people involved in the case, um, feedback, uh, written feedback about what she found if there was a failure. Um, and, and for example, like in, um, April, that four, that missed, uh, let's see, there were none in the emergency department, but, um, in the E D, there's a whole other piece of nursing documentation that's required besides the, um, orders. So, and it all, there's a, a different timeframes that depend on whether it's medical or non-medical. Um, so you have to assess, uh, circulation, um, sensation and movement every hour. But if it's violent, that's, can be every fifteen to thirty minutes. If, um, you also have to, uh, check on their nutrition elimination needs. Uh, you have to assess if the restraints are still needed and see if there are alternatives you can use, and all of that needs to be documented. So there's like, fifteen to twenty items that need to be documented every fifteen minutes or every hour, every two hours. Working on the type of restraints and the, and the age of the patient. And so in those four, uh, we missed two out of four in the month of April. And that was a total of two hours of, so it was two times documentation is, I believe, what, what Bonnie had said. So.
So I know that on all, sorry.
No, I mean, that, to speak to your question about like, what are we missing? Um, you know, in the hundreds of instances, they had to document, they missed two, two things.
One of the things I appreciate, I mean, I know you guys in your office, you keep all these, you know, all the, all the statistics and, and you sort of, all the, the facts sort of drawing down, very specific stuff that you were, you have always been very, uh, willing to, to show us if we have any questions about it. And it's hel- it helps me a little bit, because, you know, percentage of patients meeting all measures, and like you said, if, if they, if they forget to document one, check, if they actually did, did the check, but it wasn't documented, it wasn't timestamped or something, that wouldn't count, that would count as a failure. On the data, like, if there were a really catastrophic, like awful failure, you know, like, uh, like it wasn't approved by anybody or, and, you know, I don't know, some, uh, uh, I don't know, one of the housekeepers decided that the person was being unruly or something, you know, it's just something awful. Uh, would it just, it would just, on our, I know you would have all that information, but on our dashboard, that would sort of look the same as, as this little miss.
Yeah.
But is that the sort of thing, like if it were a catastrophic thing, like just something off? Uh, like someone who wasn't, who wasn't authorized, uh, to, to require restraints or something? Right, or unorthodox measures or something. Is that the sort of thing that would, um, that would put us on somebody's radar, right? That, like, that would be a report of, would that be like?
Definitely are, there's adverse events that are reportable, so anyone who has, uh, there's, it's one of the, on the adverse events that we must do cause analysis and report to the state. If you have a patient in restraints who has serious, um, injury, disability or death, while in restraints.
So there's some failures that we would, uh, hear more about if they were more serious.
Yes.
Okay.
Um, historically, they used to have a device they could put on the bed. And if the person stood up, it would beep and tell them they're getting out of the bed. Uh, do we still use those?
Yep.
And are those considered a restraint?
No.
Except in one circumstance.
Uh, if you run a nursing home, I guess, but we don't.
Okay, so.
Heard that somewhere.
Uh, even though the, the, it sets off an alarm, they're getting out of the bed, that isn't a restraint?
No.
Okay.
It doesn't restrict their movement at all.
But somebody could run down and tell them to get back in the bed and not get out.
And a lot of the beds nowadays have the bed alarms built into them.
Right.
They're not even a separate device, they're just part of the bed.
Right, but, uh, uh, that's not a restraint.
Nope.
Am I right in, in, uh, assuming that all the failures or the not meeting all the measures?
Yeah.
Uh, that we have, that they're all, are they all reportable, reporting issues? Are they all about, uh, doc- sorry, documentation issues and, and stuff like that?
Yeah. Um, I, it, we probably wouldn't see it this way. It'd be an incident report that someone would put in if they're, and I would think we would hear about it a lot sooner than revealing the charts. That's really what we're looking, is documentation. That's what this measure is about.
Bonnie's giving one-on-one feedback.
So I have, oh, sorry, the example of it. No, but that's what I wanted to bring is that, so anytime that, she finds a failure, she is sending an email out, and this is what she does for other of these cases she reviews to, sepsis, um, E K G, um, the blood product or suicide risk assessment, she sends an email out to them, a, a quality improvement email that says, hey, here's what happened with this patient, it looks like they had, you know, this happened and this is the requirement. Um, just reminding you, here's where you document it. Um, so, she's educating them and making them aware, because they probably didn't realize that they missed it. Um, it's, you know, fifteen minutes goes fast. Uh, uh, so that's, that's usually what's happening, but she's giving that real, that feedback to them. So the way that this is, um, this, the, we find these cases is we pull a report from Oracle that says, these patients had something documented in restraints at some point, and that allows us to, to know what charts to look at. Uh, and then she goes through and she assesses like, what was the indication? Did they have the right order? Was the order reordered when it should be? Did they document all these elements? And yet, if we miss one thing, then it's off. So part of how we hear about, I guess, the severity of the failure too, is at data share every month that we have at the beginning of the month where all the leaders get together with the quality folks and, and different people that work on data and quality improvement and say, what happened with this? What's going on? So we have, um, that understanding and we can initiate improvement to, um, prioritizing, you know, for Q I council or something, we're, we're trying to improve right away.
Erica, you know.
Thank you. How labor intensive is the documentation process? If you're going back and checking every fifteen minutes, is it a series of boxes you're checking? Is that an area of what? Is that a little, it's boxes, like the, it's an oracle. And these patients do have somebody sitting with them and watching. And that's their, their. If the documenter is involved in something very pressing at that moment, let's say they're, living life next door, something like that, and aren't able to get back in that timeframe, are they allowed to back time it and say, you know, somebody says, oh, I did this, I don't know how it would work out, but can you back time it and say, yes, this check was done at this time? Or does the actual act of documenting have to happen?
You can, you can back time.
Okay, that's good, good, a little flexibility there.
Um, I will say too, I was talking with Bonnie and she feels like, uh, so one of the reasons it looks so crazy though too, is there are low numbers. And our numbers of patients in restraints are lower than they have been in the past. And I think, I think some of that is because we have been able to have sitters more, and so we've been able to avoid restraints. Um, so I, I, I just want to call some kudos out for that, that they're, you know, they, they used to be slightly higher numbers last year, more like eight and ten.
Yeah, you could, I mean, I suppose I could look at Jason's numbers to find out how many people were in the E D in April. But, uh, for, uh, for, uh, restrained, how often, just as a sort of, I know you, I'm not asking for specific numbers, but how often does this happen usually in the E D?
What you're seeing here, I mean, it, it just depends.
Yeah.
You know, it's, it's great if we're able to de-escalate and do the, you know, diversions. So, you know, when we do have to restrain, it's, it's hopefully also for a very short amount of time.
Mandy, how does, um, law enforcement get into this?
Those are called forensic restraints when they are in restraints for law enforcement. Uh, you might want to, want to. Usually, um, if it's at all possible, they try to remove their forensic restraints and, and those are their restraints. We don't use those. Um, and so, and then if they remove them, then we make a decision about whether or not we need to have them in restraints or not ourselves. And then, so if, if they have forensic restraints on that, that is different. We, it's different criteria, we, we're not in charge of those restraints.
Thank you.
We try as much as possible, even with, um, detained patients to, to avoid restraints. It's just a, it's a risk for the, for the patient.
So since the number is a low, it doesn't really mean that it was damage to the patient. It was just that they didn't fill out the bundle correctly, correct?
This is really about documenting, it's not about harm.
Right, yeah, so that, that's one of the things that, uh, we should know what that means. It's kind of like back on the suicide one, there was people worrying that, since it wasn't a hundred percent, uh, there was a certain percentage of people committing suicide, but again, that was a bundle that wasn't quite filled out all the way.
It is about the assessment and the intervention.
Right, that it didn't cause damage to the human being, uh, and the same thing with the restraint bundle.
But now they're separate.
They would be reportable events. We would, uh, we have to notify the state if those things happen in our facility.
Right.
And, um, okay, yeah.
So I don't, um, I, the, the only other thing I wanted to mention was just about, uh, restraints is that there is an R C W in Washington State. It's actually about workplace violence prevention, but it does require us to do training on the application and use of restraints. So that's another place that it's, this is kind of required work for us, um, organizationally to do.
So, um, I know that, uh, in quality, you guys are always working to approve things, uh, with restraints, and there are a lot of places where things are ticking up, or ticking down, if that's better. Uh, but, uh, with restraints, it's always sort of ping ponging around. And, you know, it, it's part of it has to do with the fact that there's so few of them. And part of it has to do with the fact that there are so many things that you have to document, so I get all that. Uh, but I also know that you guys are, are sort of working hard to make sure that, um, you know, the documentation is done properly and things like that. I guess here's my, here's my, here's my tough, not softball question, but like, how, how are you guys? Is there a plan to sort of get it so it's sort of trending upwards that the pro- providers actually document like they're supposed to?
Um, transitioning the reviews to Bonnie and having her provide that feedback directly to the staff is part of that. Um, I do think it's worth noting that during this D N V survey though, that wasn't what they found. It wasn't that documentation, it was other documentation. So they found some things that we weren't yet focused on, and this wasn't what we had a finding on. So, um, I guess I would say sometimes I think the way we measure things, we're harder on ourselves than others are.
Yeah.
Right?
Your goal is a hundred percent, which is.
A hundred percent, and also if you, if, and part of that, that is, the way this measure is designed was kind of after the way that, um, C M S designed it, bundled measures and kind of this philosophy that, you know, everything should be documented all the time and, and C M S isn't going to care if you, you know, if it was only one time, if they don't see it, it's going to be a finding. Um, but if you think about it as far as like, of all the instances we had to document, you know, there were probably hundreds and we missed two, so is that a better percentage, a better reflection of the care than, than bundling it the way we do and having it be, you know, you missed one thing, you missed the whole.
So on this, uh.
That person.
On patient X, we got a hundred percent of it. On patient Y, we got, uh, eighty percent of it. Right now, it just shows that you're fifty percent.
Right. Because, and, and actually I should point that out too, it's not clear on here. It is instances of restraints, not patients. So one of these, two of those numbers there are the same patient that have, uh, restraints applied and then removed and then applied again. So, um, that's, that's another thing to think about. And I think in one of the cases too, the, the restraints were only on for like fifteen minutes, which was good, right? They're, um, removing them as soon as they can. They're not using them very long, but that, yeah, this measure doesn't, um, tell the story very well of what's going on.
All right. Jesus has been really illuminating for me. Are there any other questions about, uh, about, uh, about restraints? Bob, did you have a question or you just wanted to?
No, I, it's, it's great to do a deep dive into it to understand it better.
Yeah. Any questions about, uh, about restraints specifically?
Based on the twelve month numbers there, it's about one out of every four hundred and seventy-five patients in the E R. Get the restraints.
Okay.
Or instance, if I guess. It, it feels like that metric of how many total opportunities to document, how many missed opportunities would be an additional ratio that might give us better perspective, because again, this is such a dramatic graph. If you misinterpret it, we're really failing. When you realize ninety-nine point nine percent of the time, we're doing it correctly. But like you said, fifteen minutes goes really quick and you're distracted for a few minutes and fall behind. It can be reflected very negatively.
Only problem is I think that is really, really challenging to calculate.
I, that was going to be my next thing, but I bet, that's not something you just push a button and the machine magically tells you.
Take Bonnie counting each field she's looking at and then counting how many, like something wasn't there, so.
That's funny, because I was thinking like, on these misses, what percent of it was right? Was it a ninety-nine percent? But I didn't want to say anything, so I just.
All right, well, Godspeed, Bonnie.
So, but on average, a patient, a, a typical patient, how, how many documentations for?
Well, I don't know, it just depends on how.
Variables.
Yes, because sometimes you do have patients in restraints for, for days, just depending on their care. So if you think about, if, let's say that's for violent restraints and someone that, you know, we're having trouble placing them in an inpatient site unit or something, that's every fifteen minutes for forty-eight hours. that's every fifteen minutes for forty-eight hours. And then each fifteen minutes, there's like, you know, what's only doing seven, eight, twelve fields that need to be filled out on top of the orders that are every, you know, two hours.
Are those fields all in one page? So you don't have to hunt?
I don't know. Yeah, it's, it's, you know, it's oracle, and you can tab through, you know, and it, it, everything is there. But it's, it's just a lot of computer.
You have to hunt for different parts of the record and.
Not, not for the flow sheet. It's not, it's, it's doable. We do it a lot. But it's, it's hard to say, because yeah, if you have someone in restraints for fifteen minutes, then it's only a few fields, uh, the one time and.
Do staff ever give feedback on why it was missed? Like, oh, gosh, you know, I thought I did that, or, yeah, for like.
Cody and Jeff would have one-on-one conversations with them too. Directors are also included in this, so they, they're aware. Yeah, they're, they're CC'd on, on these, um, communications now. There, so the difference now is it's in writing, which I do think, um, that's one of the things, though, about being in quality sometimes, is when you do send it in writing, sometimes that feels more punitive, I guess, which it shouldn't, but it does get more attention too sometimes. And so we'll see. It, it has helped with, in other areas.
Were there common like flow hurdles that are discovered? Have you discovered any?
I, I don't think so, because, um, part of, uh, previous surveys is, was improving this policy and working on the documentation, making sure there's tasks that remind people, um, the care plan. So I, there's been a lot of work to try and get the workflow to be as easy as possible. Uh, and that's one of the things they're doing with the face-to-face evaluation finding is making sure that it's easy for the providers to put this documentation in and make sure it's timestamped.
And all that effort might be why Matt has noticed that it's a decreased number of misses.
I don't know. It, uh, it's, there's, the numbers are so small.
Hard to say whether it's.
He, I think he wants to see it closer to a hundred, like he's trying to say.
Um, I appreciate this, uh, very much. It was, like I said, it was really illuminating. Anything else on restraints specifically?
I think we have a really good policy. Um, and we had DNB here, what, a couple of years ago, and they did that class. Oh, yeah, yeah. And that was where, you know, we had invited other hospitals. I think it was just last summer. Couple of years ago, last summer. Yes, yeah. And our, our policy is great. It's just, there's so much to it. And to do that, I mean, it, it really does take somebody very dedicated to looking at those details, the, the documentation. Um, you know, I know there are a lot of eyes on these patients. Uh, it's, but it comes back to that documentation piece.
And it's good that it's not like the first thing you track. If you can avoid it, you can.
Yes. That's it. And the staff are really good about that.
Well, I really appreciate this. Thank you for doing so much detail on that. Uh, this was my, my selection for what I wanted to deep dive on. So I'm gonna put, you guys don't have to all speak up, but is there anyone who would like to speak up for what they would like a deep dive on? All right, Erica, you got it.
Yeah.
For next one.
So, um, the hospital acquired infections is one that always gets me. It seems so punitive for how, well, you know, so much is out of our control once a person leaves these doors. And I'm curious to know if they're, um, well, first of all, just in general, like you have to teach us about that. But I also wonder, is there investigation for what happened? If it's, is there a way to, do we culture it? Do we say, hey, I recognize that bug, or this is a foreign bug, or?
I can tell you all about that.
I'd love to hear all about that.
All right.
I won't say much, I won't say anything now, but yes, the answer is yes, and we can talk about it, yes.
All right, July, hospital acquired, Erica's pick.
And if you have specific questions, just email. That's Matt did.
Now, are there, um, is there anybody who wants to get in the queue for August? Or do you guys wanna wait a month to make your pick?
I kinda like just waiting for the moment and aggressively try to. Speak first. I just was taking an inhale, thinking about it, saying, I think you're there.
Your enthusiasm from all of you.
Uh, all right, so, um, John, Terry, and Bob, if you wouldn't mind just thinking about which one you would like a deep dive on in the future, since I, I mean, we're gonna do this into the indefinite future. Um, we'll be able to do this again and again. So, um, you know, if there's more than one, you'll have a chance to get it, uh, as your second, third, fourth. So, uh, anyway, think about which one, what you would like for, uh, August, or, um, you know, other months coming up. Then, uh, we'll pass that along to Mandy. Sound good?
Yep.
Right?
Yeah, for, for me, I don't know if we're gonna go into like community care, but, but start for our home health. Is the interest, um, it seems like we have pretty short numbers, but, um, and in some areas, some states, we start hospice, they start hospice a lot earlier. Is that something we could, or are we, are we just trying to stick with, uh, hospital quality stuff?
Well, Bob, you, you're a commissioner. We can do anything you want.
Okay.
So if you'd like to do that, I'm sure you'd be happy to, uh, to address that.
Yeah.
Are you trying to jump ahead of Erica and do it next month?
No.
He's trying to play August.
And that might be something, uh, that, uh, Dr. Mark already has some things to say about that, too. Uh, so, uh, so is that good for August?
For me.
Bob, you're, you're good.
I don't wanna jump ahead of Erica.
No, Erica's got July. Yeah, so then you'll be, uh, you'll be August. That sound, is that all right, uh, Mandy, Dr. Martin?
I'm, I'm sure, yeah, we'll coordinate with Rhonda, too.
Keep September.
September is, well, you can tell us in August, uh, what you like, uh, for September. All right. So, um, uh, Terry and John, if you guys come up with something, feel free to pass it along to Mandy.
Okey dokey. Um, I don't wanna be hokey, right?
No, that's all right, you're not hokey. All right, so.
Or hokey.
No, you're good. Uh, is there anything else, any other questions about the dashboard? I really appreciate that, Mandy. Thank you for, for doing that.
Trying to, if there was anything in particular that.
That's exactly, uh, that's exactly the sort of stuff I.
Well, um, I will say, at Q, it's in my report, but at QI council, too, we also talked about, um, having the sepsis group come and talk about kind of what's going on with sepsis. Um, we have that, it goes down for three months, um, and hasn't been quite where we wanted it to be, so.
So that might be a presentation coming with?
It could be. It'll be at QI council, sure.
Well, let's, uh, we'll talk about a QI council. I'm gonna think about whether we wanna have that.
It might be good for the, uh, them to come then in September, after the August QI council.
Okay. Uh, that's a good idea. I mean, sepsis, yes, I mean, that's a.
Oh, it is, you're right. Yes.
All right. Well, do we, uh, do we want to, to, to plan that then?
Let's do it.
Okay, so August QI council, we'll, we'll talk about it. We'll have the presentation there. And then at the September for board leading on the presentation, is that all right to Mandy? Sound good?
Yeah.
All right, I like it. Thank you for my, other questions then about the dashboard? Good? Well, again, thanks a lot for that detailed, uh, report on the restraints, Mandy. I really appreciate that. Helps me to understand it a lot better than I have, even after many years of reporting.
I enjoy it too. You like to take others for reasons in my working quality.
Any last questions for, uh, for Mandy? All right, thanks a lot, Mandy. Then we move on to our CEO, Julie Peterson. Julie?
I have just a few things to add. I, in your packet, I will call attention to the article that was in the paper, that for us, thank you very much for that. There's also, I sent you a link today to a podcast that I did like back at the annual meeting in April with the American Hospital Association on rural OB. So I think they're going to release that July fifteenth, but we'll sneak a view of it, so. Um, I, this is, just happens to be my eight-year anniversary. So I want to thank you all, the commissioners, for the opportunity to serve the district for eight years. I continue to have the best job in the county, so thank you for that. Going to celebrate by going on PTO. I will be gone the twenty-eighth, uh, so starting tomorrow, and I'll be back on July tenth. So I, uh, Jason will make sure nobody spends in here, gets crazy when I'm gone. But you will be here for that, so. Um, I just need to call out that he is gone now, but this is Ron's last meeting. Ron's state of retirement is July third, so his last day will be next week. And this is Manda's cast. There he is.
Hey.
Your last meeting. Your last, your last day is July third. We had a senior leadership celebration, celebration, commemoration, whatever. Um, and then, uh, the folks here at the hospital had an opportunity to say goodbye both Manda and Ron yesterday. But anything to say, Ron, with the commissioners, or?
Yeah, I wanna thank you guys for your support and acknowledgement from my efforts over the years.
Oh, we really appreciate the excellent work you've done for the, for the hospital district and for those hospitals, uh, in particular. And, uh, really, it's, it's nice to know that all of these projects are very good and it's, it's been good not to have to worry about that.
Doesn't have the air handlers figured out. We figured out the other day that in, during Ron's tenure, we've added a hundred and ten thousand square feet in the district. So it may be a reason he's decided to retire at thirty-five, right? Twenty.
Well, we're getting a bust made. Put up with that number under.
The other milestone is this is Manda's last meeting and her very last day as well, so. Any comments or thoughts, Manda, on your way out?
Um, yeah, I put a note in there. I just really appreciate everyone's support. I, there's just so much that I'll never forget, going through COVID and healthcare, and I've just, I've loved it here. And again, I, I think in my other message, I said I had two babies here. I went to school here in Central. I met my husband here. It's very hard to leave such a special place personally for me. But, um, I appreciate the partnership and I hope to continue so in my new role, um, working in healthcare in a different way, in public health. And, um, yeah, thank you for everything. I hope to stay in touch and appreciate the friendships and relationships that I've made. And I'm happy to go over a few things in my report to at the appropriate time, if you want me to. Jump to business helps me pretend it's a normal day and.
I have to say something. I mean, they, you know, we, uh, I think that, uh, since you've been in the position and you've really sort of raised the, the kind of level of what we expect of, of the head of HR. I mean, you've, uh, I mean, we didn't even have a report from. And, um, I also just, uh, on a personal note, I really appreciated working closely with you as, as the CEO of that. Because you've been extraordinarily helpful with that, and, and I'm not sure we, we could have done it nearly as well, uh, without all your help. So I, I personally appreciate, um, how much work you put into that. How you sort of made us, made the job a whole lot easier. So thank you.
Well, thank you. With wonderful competitive applicant pool as well, so I was thrilled for that. And you'll be in good hands with my team and the, and my successor, I hope so.
As with, uh, me, Ron, you and Manda both, it's, um, it's gonna be hard to have someone else in this, in this position, but, uh, they'll try. They'll try to fill your shoes somehow. Uh, Julie, do you have anything, or do you want us to just, uh?
Nope, that, those, that's the end of my things.
Amanda, yeah, do you wanna draw our attention to anything in your reports?
Um, you know, just a couple of things. Recruitment, uh, we're making a lot of progress in, in many areas. Um, but I, we're almost, and we may be now up to eight hundred employees. Um, kind of interesting milestone, and that's, doesn't even count our, um, our students, volunteers, our contracted partnerships that we have as well. So it's, um, definitely been a busy time in HR. Um, I do wanna say, um, a little bit about recruiting for ancillary services. So we do have a contract in place that we're still working with, with an outside recruiter to focus on things like ultrasound, respiratory, and, um, physical therapy. So we do have, we've done some creative things around nursing in the last few years, but Rhonda and HR have been really partnering on that. So we do have something in place for that currently that we're working through. And unfortunately, they didn't have any secrets either. They're struggling finding candidates, and that's their full-time job. But we are making a lot of efforts on some of those ancillary services. Um, experienced healthcare is coming, so Kyle and Michelle's team are working really hard on that. And then, um, I also wanna say, because this happened just this week, um, and it was in previous reports, and I did not include it in my report. But, um, the pharmacy, uh, the pharmacy group did vote no against, um, adding a new bargaining unit from pharmacy with Teamsters. So, um, that happened this week as well. So that will not be, usually those do come eventually after negotiations, uh, to the board. But that will not be coming, and we've had some good connections with that team. And, um, they're starting some good communication processes as well. For any concerns that they did have are continuing to be addressed. So Rhonda's doing a really great job with Nasser on continued communication plans. Um, and I just, I put a note here about the provider coaching program. That was something I was really looking forward to this year in my position, and I won't get to see it end. But, um, we have had really good feedback from the providers, and that was something the foundation, um, offered to help support us to sponsor that program. But the providers rated their coach sessions a four point four out of five, and eighty-four, eighty-five percent said that their coach helped them clarify their goals. So that is part of our employer of choice strategy for development and a really cool program that I got to participate in, so. Thank you. Any questions on my report?
Square footage on, on, do you have number of employees on Amanda?
I was just thinking.
Cause eight hundred is pretty impressive.
I, yeah, I don't know. I'd be guessing. I thought I should, should have looked that up, but.
Well, I think when I, I mean, when I got here many years ago, I mean, it was, I think, it was somewhere around like, I mean, it was between five and six hundred, wasn't it?
That's true. I think I ran the six hundreds, so, yeah.
No, I, I look back and at some of the events that have trans, and the world is not all about COVID. But we, I, I think Manda brought a particularly elegant approach to one of the most difficult things we had to do around vaccines. And, um, it was the kindest, firmest, the most elegant, uh, of any healthcare system that I saw that went through that. And, um, I think that really encapsulated what I have learned in the partnership that I have had with Manda over the last four and a half years, is really about maintaining a standard, holding to your values, but at the same time, being the kindest, most gracious employer that we can. And, and I miss that, so. Thanks.
Me too.
Well, I have to bring us down to everything. Uh, any, any questions for Manda about Manda's? All right, thank you, Manda. We have an expansion project update from, uh, Ron.
Yeah, that report starts on the twenty-two. And if you have any questions, then that's, feel free. Um, just a couple other updates, dialysis project is scheduled to finish on the third, just next week. And then the ortho project, uh, that date got moved from the third into, I believe, the eighteenth contractor. Being needing some more time to, we'd like to extend that.
So that's the due date for the minutes?
And then the PT project in Kuyalum, we got an invoice for the building permit um, today. However, I didn't see any comments from the city, so they must be close if they.
Their comfortable department is clearly.
Wouldn't expect too many comments on that.
All right. Any, any questions for Ron about, uh, about the expansion project or anything else? But, uh, anything? Thank you very much, Ron. Appreciate it. All right. Anything else, Julie, before we move on? All right. Next up, we have operations. Uh, first, we have Didi Utley, our chief nursing officer, Didi.
You can find my report starting on page twenty-six, and I'm gonna stick to the themes that I've been talking about for the last couple of months. Uh, Ron just mentioned the dialysis room, uh, the construction. That's the room where we'll be, um, housing the, uh, storing the dialysis units and having an office for our coordinator. And we're still on track to go live July eighth. We have been meeting very regularly with our nephrologists. We have been meeting very regularly with our nephrologists and our team, going through our policies. Um, they've begun the testing. We are scheduled to do a mock patient scenario next week. We have a couple more meetings scheduled next week. And, um, there's been some standard work that has been sent out for the emergency department providers and the hospitalist group to, you know, just start thinking about, these are the patients we can now keep here and what will that look like? So we're really excited about that and hopefully next month we'll have a report that it's up and running. Um, the other thing I just want to call out is that nursing assistant, our first, um, class has finished, has completed. The, I do know that five of the six have passed all of the testing. The sixth, um, candidate may have already passed. I just have not heard. She went to take her, uh, the, the written test, the computer test, and the computer system went down. So it was a bummer, but, um, we do have three of them that are hired and we're working with HR on that transition while we're waiting for DOH to get their license. Um, but they have passed everything. Uh, we have one that was accepted into the MA apprentice program, which I know she was very excited about. And we have one that's exploring more the, the HIM, um, sector. So, you know, we, we expected that, not, not that everybody would just turn and want to do this work. Um, and the sixth one we're still, uh, working with. The second class will be starting July fifteenth and we have ten students and offers have gone out. We'll see what the next class brings. But lots of, lots of great work.
So I've been, I'm not sure, not sure about this question, but in patient dialysis, uh, dialysis is very exciting. And yeah, we'll be able to keep a whole, uh, a lot of patients here that we would have to transfer. Would we ever want to consider outpatient dialysis?
So in Ellensburg, DeVita has the market for outpatient dialysis. So it would definitely be, and if, i- in the last twelve, fifteen months, DeVita has with very, very little notice, closed outpatient dialysis centers in a number of areas. Yeah. Um, we're, I'm, it's not something we're looking to go head to head with DeVita on, but it's definitely a service that we would look to continue here if DeVita did. And DeVita, as you may or may not know, is part of the United Healthcare Group. So heaven knows what they're gonna do.
I didn't know that.
Yeah.
I, I mean, I knew some were shutting down, but I didn't know the status of like.
So they're, they're still operating. How many chairs do they have? Eight?
They have seven chairs, which gives them a capacity of twenty-eight patients roughly. But they're running just over half of that for last, I was aware. Uh, they are not doing, uh, um, afternoons, Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday. So that puts them at a cap of twenty-one. Um, and my understanding is that they're frequently low census in staff Tuesday, uh, Thursday, Saturday mornings.
So that, that's not because of lack of demand, is?
I suspect it's out migration.
All right.
And it, it, you might think about what it takes to, uh, want to leave the community to receive the service that you have to, uh, receive twelve hours a week.
Yeah. All right. Well, I'm glad that you guys are, and have your intention. All right.
Just the last thing I do want to take note, I'm sure you saw the note from family workplace Stacy Button. She is taking another role in our organization, which I'm thrilled. Um, so we'll be working on bringing on a director.
It's quite a change, you know?
Clinical informatics educator.
Yes.
Jeff got her. Jeff actually stole a nurse.
All right. Um, any questions for Dee? All right. Thank you very much, Steve. Uh, next up, we have Rhonda Holden, um, our chief ancillary officer. Rhonda?
Yes, my report begins on page twenty-eight. And, um, I, I do want to say that, uh, Jason and I attended a rural health collaborative call for radiology directors. And we did ask them the question about whether or not they have their ultrasound staff on call and they, they do not. Those directors, um, firmly agreed that they would lose their staff because you can't get the ultrasound staff to be on call. And it's just such a hard to fill position right now that, that they did not have their staff on call. Um, so anyway, I just thought I would share that. Um, under rehab services, I'm actually going to be down beginning next week. I'm going to be down three physical therapists in Ellensburg. We have Marcus Jaffe going on a military leave for two weeks. Uh, one staff had a death in her family and will be on some bereavement leave. And then one of our staff members, uh, broke her foot. So that's going to be, uh, tough in our physical therapy department. And I did include the time, um, on page thirty, uh, we have Visions year-to-date numbers. And you can see in the initial evaluation on the left-hand side at the top. It is taking a long time to get that initial evaluation, but once they have that evaluation, they're able to get you in quickly for your follow-up appointments. Um, I am asking Marcus to try to flip that to get them in quicker for that initial evaluation. And then maybe spread it out to the time for their next appointment, which is what all of our competitors are doing. And our providers seem to be happier with that.
So can I put some context to that? Um, basically the difference is we do an evaluation when we know we will be able to get the patient in for a regular course of care. Assuming that the evaluation tells us they're going to need to care. What we're finding is that, that referrals are being made to agencies who instead do the evaluation the next day, but can't get into care for three, four, five weeks. So, um, on the front end, the referrals been made, it's been accepted, the practitioner making that referral, doesn't know that care doesn't actually happen for many, many weeks after the evaluation's been done. So, and we do it just the opposite. We wait until we know we can evaluate and then continue care.
Evaluating first and then creating a schedule later opens the door for people to come in. There's cancellation though, that sort of, that make that a little bit more accessible. So.
I think that's what we're asking Marcus to look at.
Okay.
Yeah. Any, any other questions, comments?
Well, the only thing I'll mention is, um, I wasn't, what I was doing here in my phone a second ago was I was texting Dee. Uh, this information I got about, uh, this, um, uh, support from Wish, uh, hospital staffing committees. Anyway, uh, they might, I, we had you get this thing going in case you, you want, in case you need any sort of assistance, I guess.
I, I know them.
You're all familiar with them all.
Oh, yes. Our charter submit.
Oh, all right. Oh, that's good.
Just waiting for feedback.
All right. Um, any questions for, uh, our chief ancillary officer, Rhonda Holden? Uh, all right. Thank you very much, Rhonda.
Thank you.
Uh, next, next up, we have Stacy O'Leary, chief of clinic operations. Stacy?
Yes, my report starts on page thirty-two. Um, just a few things to point out and update. Our MA apprentices, we did make two offers. Both were accepted. One of them is coming from the CNA program. And I just want to talk a little bit about why we only have two versus your CNA program is seeing six, nine, ten. Um, the MA apprenticeship program is actually a year-long program. And when the group that we're going through with requires one-to-one preceptorship. So for that entire year, you have to dedicate an existing MA to oversee that entire education. So that limits us to how many people we can actually have be preceptors, which then limits us to how many students we bring in. We also give them ninety days once they complete that year to get their certification done. So we've got a lot of time invested into the MA apprentices. Once again, it's more than half of our existing certified MA's medical assistants come from their apprenticeship program. So it's been a phenomenal way for us to get people into KVH, get people into the organization. And probably about thirty percent move into nursing, um, through med school. They expand just like the CNA program and go into some type of other medical specialty in there.
I mean, I love that program. Uh, how long has it been around again?
I think twenty seventeen.
Yeah. Um, do we have, do we have numbers on, I'll put, I'll read phrases. Uh, people stick around after they?
I can get you, I could work for my next report and do some current information on it. We're seeing about thirty percent of them move on to something else. So whether it's up going to nursing school and even in the interview process, we get people, I know I want to do more, but I feel like this is a really good place to start.
Um, it's probably too early to know if we can get them back from nursing.
We might.
Actually, I can, I can think of one off the top of my head that is now per DMR and SOP. That was one of the first pair of MA apprentices.
The other thing I want to point out, women's health, we talk a lot about being able to deliver babies here and what all that takes. And if you look at the stats for last month, it was fifteen deliveries. It doesn't sound like a lot. But right now, well, as of last week, Thursday, when I wrote my report, we had one hundred and fifty patients that we were doing prenatal care. So even while the delivery numbers aren't high, that patient load is actually fairly high. So I just wanted to point that out, that that brings challenges to the clinic because those are all different types of appointments you have to do. And then, um, my one kind of disappointing news in orthopedics, um, we had one of the PAs decide that he was not going to come to work for us. That was announced today. So we do only have one PA joining orthopedics in July. Uh, we do, I've been working with the clinic manager. We do still expect to be able to do orthopedics up in Clealum Clinic, given with only one PA starting. So I am available to ask, answer any questions.
Any questions for Stacy?
I like the Clealum. Next month we'll start having pediatrics services two days a month as well.
We've already got patients called in and scheduling and the word is out in the community that pediatrics will be available in Cleveland from KVH.
Well, add it on to the long list of new services.
And it's after frozen forty appointments. So, yeah, that's great.
Well, this has been the kind of story of the last, I don't know, well, since Julie got here anyway, is that, uh, the demand's there. You just need to, to go after it. Uh, any questions for Stacy? All right. Thank you very much, Stacy. Uh, if there's nothing, nothing else on operations, we'll move on then to medical staff and we'll start with our chief of staff, Dr. Hoppy.
Yes, uh, thank you. My report is on page thirty-five. Um, and I think we had five initial appointments minus one. There'll be a withdrawal of that, um, initial appointment by the applicants, these are the ones that are coming here. Uh, and then we had sixteen, uh, reappointments. Uh, we're all, uh, signed up by the medical elective committee. And then additionally, we, uh, added, uh, requests for privileges on the point-of-care ultrasound for the ED physicians that were interested in performing that. And there is a, uh, I believe there is a total of fourteen providers that added that, um, service to their credentialing list. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
So we, uh, so we reviewed all these, all the initial appointments and reappointments through the I-MIND system. The, this, the additional privilege request, this is just, uh, this is, could you say a little more about this? Is this the first time we've had to do this?
Yes. Um, currently what they're really asking for is ultrasound privileges that are part of physicians residency training. Uh, and this is rather specifically the result of the Antala investigation. And a way to maintain staffing when we can't get techs. If, if we can have the study done by a doc, then we don't have to send the patient to his, well, we'll hold them until morning or Monday morning.
I see. And these, uh, this is something that you guys, uh, talked about in MVC. Uh, and since it's a, since it's giving additional privileges, it's something that we as a board have to approve. Um, are there any questions about that specifically, since that is, this is a new thing for us? Uh, anything else that, uh, you think we should know, uh, Dr. Hoppy, before I, I, um, call for a motion?
I think that's it.
All right. So, uh, do I have a motion to approve this list of initial appointments and reappointments as well as the additional, um, privileges for point-of-care ultrasound for the people listed here? Do I have a motion to approve?
I need to approve.
Second, okay, we have a motion to approve from Erica, second from John. He just beat, beat you up. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. Good, unanimous. Anything else, Dr. Hoppy?
Uh, just one last thing I'll mention is we're getting ready to test, uh, the MD stat, um, software that we have. Um, and we're gonna use that for kind of monitoring OPPEs, which are the ongoing professional, um, performance evaluations. So that's how we monitor performance of our physicians in KVH. We're also utilizing that for our peer review, uh, process as well. So, um, thank you very much for utilizing it and see you.
All right. Great. Thanks for the update. All right. Thank you, Dr. Hoppy. Thank you very much, uh, Dr. Hoppy. Um, next up, we have our chief medical officer, Dr. Kevin Mark. Dr. Mark?
My report starts on page thirty-seven. Two changes. One, I'll be the third person to point out that Mike Schultes at four-thirty this morning withdrew his acceptance of our offer.
He was due to start July tenth, was that right?
Uh, a lot of work went into recruiting him, negotiating with him, making sure that we had systems in place to support him. And, uh, it's fair to say that we're feeling like we have the rug kicked out from under us. Um, the only other issue that I have to address is the antibiotic stewardship committee. This is something that, uh, that part of our accreditation with DNZ. Structured program. It is to be led by physician and a pharmacist. Previously, that was Dr. Hibbs in Nasser. Going forward, Ken Larson and I have made ourselves available for that work. And this is a board appointment, and so I'm asking that you appoint us as co-leads of antibiotic stewardship.
So I, do we, do you need a motion? Yeah, we would, uh, get a motion, Terry. Before we go to that though, are there any questions about, uh, Dr. Martin's, uh, report?
Um, I was gonna say, just in general, the recruiting of provider, if you see it getting a little, I don't, I hate to use the word easier, but going in the direction where some of these positions eventually might get filled.
Um, well, we've, we've filled quite a few since the first of the year. Um, there are still positions that we simply have no traction on. There are. There is an increase in the number of local providers that are looking for new positions. And we'll probably benefit from some of that. Um, we're coming to the point in the academic year where I would expect to see less interest. Um, most residents are trying to find positions first, second quarter. And we're actually now seeing them looking third, fourth quarter of their third year, of their last year. So, uh, it's still gonna be a tough market. It is the, the short answer. Um, again, the number that is, that I keep remembering and hearing is that currently about a third of the physician, we're, a third of practicing physicians are over the age of fifty-five. About one in five are over the age of sixty-five. There's millions of practicing physicians nationwide roughly. So that's about three hundred thousand that we can expect to leave the workforce in the coming years. Nationally across all specialties, I think we're up to about thirty-two thousand. Nationally across all specialties, I think we're up to about thirty-two thousand if we finish training each year. So we, we know that we're going to have an expense of three hundred thousand dollars and we get thirty-two thousand dollars a year and. Makes a tough balance.
Any other questions about the report? All right, so then we have to, um, to, uh. Vote on, uh, the leads of the anti-bi- antibiotic stewardship committee, Dr. Gordon Martin and Ken Larson. Uh, Terry, do I hear right that you'd like to make a motion to approve?
Well, I definitely want to approve this motion because I, I know, uh, Ken Larson has a lot of history about antibiotics. And he's a very good pharmacist that has dealt a lot about antibiotics. So between Dr. Martin and, uh, and Ken Larson. We'll have a really good antibiotic stewardship, stewardship committee, and it'll increase our quality, uh, probably a hundred ten percent.
All right, well, it sounds like, uh, the committee will be in good hands then. Have a motion from Terry. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Erica. Any further discussion?
Can I add one thing?
Yes.
The requirement is that they are appointed at the recommendation of medical staff. And so this was also recommended by the medicine P and T committee that they be appointed to this position. So I just want to note that that it was at their recommendation.
All right, good. Yeah, it's good to know the process by which it comes.
And that is one of the requirements to.
Very intentional.
Their recommendation also.
Thank you for, uh, filling that in, Mandy. Uh, okay, then there's a, there's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving Dr. Dr. Martin and Ken Larson as leads of the antibiotic stewardship committee, please say aye.
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, good. Uh, it's unanimous. Uh, anything else, Dr. Martin? All right, thanks. Congratulations.
Mazel tov might be better.
All right.
No, no, can.
All right, so next up, we have our chief financial officer, Jason Adler. Jason?
Thank you. My report's starting on page thirty-nine there. I've run through some of the stats. Ge- generally, May had a, had a strong month for stats, so surgery, GI cases, plane visits, everything was relatively higher. Than we've seen through April, January through April. Um, with that, it drove the highest record that we've ever had for revenue for, uh, hospital district at twenty-two point six million. Our last record was in April of this year, so last month about twenty-one point four million. So it was. It was a very positive month and Woody was quite busy. Um, overall expenses were just slightly over budget, primarily due to salaries, templo, professional fees. The salaries is going to be over budget through the year. I missed the budget. And mostly missed in the area of clinics. So that is my fault. I'm doing math for salaries. Um, but otherwise, everything else pretty close to budget. Supplies, I wanted to note, are right at budget for the month and. Under for the year. They're under because of volumes, but they're also under due to just materials management. Work with, um, managing contract pricing and, and getting the best prices that we can for all these services. They have. A new software sys- not a new software system in place, but they, um, optimize their programs in place to match pricing to our contracted GPO. Pricing, and we get tons of invoices for supplies that aren't at those. Contracted amounts that they push back on, so just want to highlight their work. Uh, with the strong revenue, we ended the month with a positive operating income of two hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. And then adding back net income or adding back, um, investment income, we came to a positive of five hundred and two thousand for the month. And year-to-date, it makes us just slightly positive, I think. About thirty thousand dollars net positive for the year, so. We've been making a lot of our investment income this year. Revenue cycle team made a lot of progress in pulling down the AR, so still reeling in from the impacts of the Optum CyberTech. AR came down from seventy-four point eight days in April to seventy-two point two days in May. And we also had almost a, a cash record income of twelve point seven million as they're pulling down that AR. I'm still planning, expected for cash to continue to dwindle throughout the year as we continue to spend on the expansion project.
Yeah, that's, uh, I think that's an important thing to keep in mind is that the cash on hand, we were expecting it and planning for it to go, go down.
And, and in our cat days cash on hand number is the, is included and there's the debt, debts that we took out for the expansion, so. Yeah, we absolutely planned on cash to be declining throughout the year.
I will say.
Still gives me a little.
Well, no, I, but, uh, having just talked to some people whose, whose hospitals have like twenty, thirty days cash on.
Yeah.
Uh, still feels pretty good. To be where we are.
It feels good, uh, but it started dwindling about the time that I was promoted to the role, so. Got the build-up, the playoff part, and I got the decreasing part, yeah. Uh, something to note, the safety net assessment program is a program the healthcare authority manages, and it's a, it was a federal program. But the state healthcare Medicaid program. We pay into this assessment an amount, and then the HCA takes it to the federal government and they, they match those funds. And then the HCA comes back and they redistribute those funds to the hospital, participating hospitals based on Medicaid utilization. So it's a redistribution of Medicaid dollars with a enhancement from the federal program matching. We used, this program used to only be about eighty to a hundred thousand dollars a year for us. In twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five, the legislation approved that to be significantly increased and, and we expect this. Program to be worth about seven hundred to eight hundred thousand dollars net for us. So our assessment comes in at one point two million. And each quarter, we write a check for one-fourth of that, so three hundred thousand dollars we pay to the healthcare authority. In ten days, they get matching federal dollars and they relocate that back out, and we expect to get. With that three hundred and two thousand, we expect to get about four hundred and seventy thousand back from that. We don't know the exact number until they get, they find out how much funds they match. So again, positive for us.
Yeah.
Um, one other thing to note at the bottom of the report there is I'm working with Hand Paper at Sandler to do an RFP for. Ten million dollar tax exempt bonds for, so additional debt to support the general surgery orthopedics practice. And next month, I'll bring a resolution to the board requesting, um, to be able to reimburse any costs up until that debt is. Uh, till we get that debt, we can reimburse any costs and expense on that project through that debt.
So that'll, that'll come before us next, uh, months, but are there any questions about that now?
And what you're bringing before us is a document to sign that allows us to backdate. You're not actually bringing the proposal for, no, the bond, you know, just allows us to backdate those funds.
Okay.
All right.
And with the investment returns that we're able to get on cash right now and what I anticipate our interest rates to be. It, we should be borrowing about the cost that we'll be able to have these, leave our capital invested as well, so. It'll be a good move. And do you have any questions on the rest of my narrative? Although there's a few things I want to point out in the statistics page.
Do the numbers.
The numbers, so starting at the top, everything down to surgery minutes row nine. I combined, I used to have this break, broke out inpatient outpatient surgery minutes and procedures. We combined that so that we can at a glance just see how surgery did compared to budget without doing math to add up inpatient outpatient. Month to month, the variation between in and out. Patient type just changes significantly. Um, but to note on that, when we did that math, we did not get all the formulas updated correctly. So the variables from that row down are not aligned correct. So I will have those all corrected next month, the variances. And then those variances of the formulas were carried over to the next stats page. So the twenty twenty-four annuals column and twenty twenty-four year-to-date is also not accurate.
Yes.
So I'll get, get those.
We did fifty-five thousand surgeries so far.
Yeah, we didn't, we're just shy of fifty-five thousand surgeries.
For a good year so far.
Yeah, that, that isn't it. It's fifty-five thousand. Yeah, and a hundred and fourteen thousand rehab, so it's, yeah, that, it all got misaligned there. Um, other thing to note, we have been working with revenue cycle management to, um, this boost up our collection practices. So we're going to be asking patients to pay off their patient balance within six months, as long as that. Payment per month is less than a thousand dollars per month with a minimum of fifty dollars per month payment. The, the current, um, scripting right now is what would you like to pay today? And the future scripting would be like, we see your balance is six hundred dollars. We ask for that off in six months and your payment would be a hundred dollars. They have began that scripting and it's, they've had no negative pushback from, from the patients yet. Um, but something we're also going to start offering is a care credit offering, so if those terms are not what they. Work for them, they can carry that balance longer by converting it over to a care credit program, so. And that is also an interest-free program as long as they pay it within the terms that they set up. And I think those can go up to two years.
What's that like care credit? What, could you tell me a little more about?
Yeah, so I've experienced it with veterans offices and dentist offices commonly carry this, so it's a, a credit plan that the patient would sign up for. And it would transfer their debt over to basically a credit card. That credit card will not have interest though, as long as they make their payments within the terms of that agreement.
And it doesn't bear interest because we're taking the discount on the front end. So a thousand dollars worth of patient debt, we pay ten percent. And it moves over to their credit cards.
Okay.
We discounted.
Sure, thank you.
And to note on the financial statement on page forty-six. I just wanted to note that we're changing how we're. We're adjusting how we're doing the, like, accounting allocations for the provisions for bad debt, financial assistance, other deductions. And the contractuals, so the, the total at the bottom will be the same, but currently there's been an allocation amount going to bad debt. That kind of smoothes the bad debt or makes it look smooth for the bad debt. And going forward, it'll just be the actuals that are expensing there into the provisions for bad debt. And I, I felt that would help me better see what's going on with the month on the bad debt. Little accounting to go with, and that is all that I have.
Questions?
To Jason. Jason, that's, uh. Uh, Consolidated Communications is known as our phone company here. Uh, it was bought by a company using called Rainier Connect. It's now got a different name. Uh, do you think that's going to increase our cost of our phone stuff around here?
Hopefully not, but.
You don't know yet?
I don't know.
Because they, they were supposed to, uh, get that, uh, they were supposed to have bought Consolidated Communication. Basically throughout the whole United, uh, the whole Washington state on June third. And, uh, I was also wondering, uh, if it's going to impact our internet here too. That might be something that, uh, our Jeff may need to know about also. Uh, because I know they were going to charge more money to get a paper bill when I talked to him. Then again, just an electronic bill. I don't know what kind of bill we get from them, but, uh. Uh, we might have to pay, pay a few extra pennies on it.
That's good to, yeah, it's good to be aware. Anytime that there's a purchase of a company we deal with, it may change things up, but, uh, yeah.
Yeah, right, right now, Terry, everything's contracted, so everything stays the same. Um, I think the new company is called Light. Current, just saw the, the first invoice, their new logo on it, so, um, something that I'm totally aware of and been monitoring, so.
All right, good. Uh, glad you're on top of it, Jim.
Well, because I was looking at the prices for, uh, public resident internet. And, uh, it looked like it was going to be a little more expensive than, but since we're a business, uh, maybe we won't have to pay any more pennies on it.
Yeah, our internet does not go through them. It's just our phones, so.
Okay, all right, well, I just thought it would be something, uh, to increase our quality here to talk about.
Yeah, thanks for calling our attention. It sounds like they're, uh, on top of it. Other questions for Jason about the financial report? All right, anything else, Jason?
That's all, thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, is Michelle on there?
Michelle, and, uh, she tried to make it through yesterday, came, showed up for a little while again today and failed, so.
All right.
It's like she.
So anybody want to, uh, comment at all on the, um, the report?
I would just say that the full scale exercise on June twelfth was a learning experience, I think, for us. It was, uh, driven by CWU and FEMA. And, um, it was the first time we had, while we had been in incident command for some seven hundred days, I think it was, it was the first time we've been in.
All right. Any, uh, any other comments about the reports, the community relations report? All right, uh, education board reports, uh, Terry and I went to the WISHA Royal Healthcare Leadership Conference. It just ended yesterday. I think we might have some more stuff to report back on that. At the next meeting, uh, Terry does have a, a sheet here, uh, questions board members can ask in the role of governing, uh, safety and quality. Which I'll ask, uh, board members, please, to just take a look at at some point. I talked about a lot of things, uh, they had a especially interesting session on OB. And how to sort of comply with the Washington Reproductive Privacy Act, which we've been thinking about an awful lot, but. I may have some stuff to report back on that at the next, uh, next board meeting. Sound good, Terry? We can talk more about it at the next board meeting.
Yeah, can I just make a couple of?
Go ahead.
Here, okay, so since I'm on the governance board committee for WISHA, uh, that was where I got this document. And, uh, Mandy has a copy of it, so if anybody wants to know about questions board members can ask, uh, she could probably give you a copy of it. The areas these questions are on are safety rounds, data, quality care, credentialing and privileging, and health equity. That's what the questions are under. Uh, the other thing with interesting is they were talking about. Uh, agendas and meetings, and I was really excited. The first item on the agenda, when you enter the agenda, and our first item is quality, it's under number six. Because that's when the agenda really starts, and so consequently, that's the top of the agenda, should be quality. And so our agenda, uh, meets the governance board. Uh, the other thing, uh, that, uh, I think in the future we'll talk about AI, artificial intelligence. There, uh, they talked about it quite a bit and how artificial intelligence, it's, uh, causing a lot of, uh, people to have issues. Not directly in the hospital, but of, of people that may be in the community. And they were talking about a policy and, and the governance board, uh, we talked about it too. And, uh, we don't have a policy on artificial intelligence here. Uh, but I, uh, will get a policy from the governance board. And then we can look it over and potentially draft a policy on artificial intelligence. And we'll probably talk about it in a future board meeting. Uh, and but the other thing is I think artificial intelligence will need to be addressed maybe on the dashboard or something like that. Uh, with a quality improvement committee, uh, because, uh, uh, artificial intelligence is, is a good tool. And, uh, a lot of people think over articles that were written about how artificial intelligence. Beat up and destroyed the human race. That's why a lot of people don't like the, the comments about artificial intelligence.
Yeah, it's, uh, right, it's, it's, um. They were talking about how we should have a policy on when it can be used and when it can't be used and what's it. And, yeah, we'll talk about this a little more, I think, at the next. And yeah, we'll talk about this a little more, I think, at the next meeting, if that's all right, Terry.
Does anybody have any questions about anything I commented here?
All right, all right, thank you, Terry. Okay, so we'll talk about that a little bit more at the next meeting. I don't think there's any new business. All right, then we'll move into executive session. What do you think, Julie, how long do we need to go?
Twenty minutes?
Twenty minutes?
Do you all think we have time?
Never is, but I think it works.
And we will be requesting action after the executive session.
All right, there will be action, so right now, we'll take a five-minute break. Till six fifty-five, and then we will reconvene into, or we will convene into an executive session for twenty minutes until seven fifteen. At which point, we will reconvene into open session and we expect actions. We're recessing into executive session to discuss real, real estate personnel under I C W forty-two point three zero point one ten D and D. Thank you. Thanks, everybody. Thanks, Bob, you're gonna re, rejoin us in a minute?
Yeah.